All right, it's 6 o'clock, so let's go ahead and get started. We have five members of the board here, so we have a quorum. We're going to start out our meeting today with a moment of silence, so if you'd like to join us. We're going to transition to the Pledge of Allegiance. I stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I want to welcome everybody here tonight. We do have a few guests from PB Marres, which is our auditing firm, so we have Andrea Nichols is here and Betsy Hedrick are both here, and they've traveled far to be with us tonight, so thank you for that. I also want to thank Rudy tonight for being the secretary, stepping in and doing minutes for us tonight, so thank you Rudy for that. And then I think Zach's going to have some other introductions a little bit later on in our meeting. So we're going to start out with the consideration of the agenda amendments. Does anybody have any amendments to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to pass the agenda for tonight.
So moved.
Bob, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Barb? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, so the agenda has passed. So move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the FY 2025 Audit Presentation by PB Marres.
Well, good evening, everybody. It is nice to be here with you this evening. This is our third year serving as your auditors and your audit firm, and I have to say, each year has gotten better and better, and this was even a more smooth year than the previous year. So I know there's been changes in roles and who's doing what, and new teammates and members that have come in, but they have done a great job with providing us everything that we needed to get our audit done timely. I mean, it's October, you know, we dated the report October 13th. This is great. So wanted to start off saying that. We have issued an unmodified opinion on your financial statements, and what that means is that it's a clean opinion. We feel like they are materially correct. One thing I wanted to point out that's new this year is that the library was required to adopt a new governmental accounting standard, and it relates to how we record and measure compensated absences, so accrue-lead, consistent with industry practices and standards that require a restatement to your beginning net position. So in our opinion, you'll see a new little paragraph that talks about emphasis of matter. It's just something that we need to call your attention to. It's not an error, it's not a mistake, it's that we had to change accounting principles and it required an adjustment to the beginning of the year fund balance for net position. In the back of the financial statements is our second report that we issue, and it's our report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance. We have to issue that report and perform procedures under government auditing standards. I am pleased to report that report is clean as well. So no material audit adjustments, no compliance findings that we identified, just overall really good results of the audit. Andrew's going to share a few more required communications that were required by our professional standards to share with you, and if you have any questions, just let us know. I know this is probably the first time you're seeing the financial statements. If you read them and you have questions, don't hesitate to reach out to us, we're more than happy to continue to provide assistance or answer or address, you know, some of the things that have to be in these financial statements.
Certainly. So you have two documents in front of you. The large one are the financial statements, the small one is the report to the board, and that's what I'm going to go over. This is information for the use of the board and management. There are certain communications that are required to give to you by auditing standards. It's not a very long document, I'll just briefly highlight some of the key points. You'll see a letter in the front which describes the purpose of the document. Then you can see, these are required communications which summarize our responsibilities regarding the financial statement audit, as well as observations that we have made as we've performed the audit, that we need to communicate to you to help you in your role in overseeing the financial process at the library. So as Betsy said, you can see adoption or change in accounting policies, GASP 101, that's what Betsy was referring to, related to the compensated absences. GASP 102 was also implemented, but it didn't have much of an impact on the library at any... If we did have any significant unusual accounting transactions, we would report those here if we did not have any of those. I'm very pleased to say we did not have any audit adjustments to the trial balance as presented to us to begin with the audit, and that is something you should definitely pat yourself on the back for. We're also not aware of any uncorrected misstatements, other than items which are clearly trivial. You can see more information about the emphasis of matter paragraph on page two that Betsy referenced in the opinion. And then in the observation about the audit process section, if we did have any disagreements with management, any contentious items, any difficulties performing the audit, this is where that would be reported. We don't have any of those. So essentially, it's just saying we did not have any of these items. There's also a section related to independence, which just reminds you of our shared responsibility for independence regarding the audit, our responsibility and then the library's responsibility. And then, beginning on page four, I want to point you to a chart that says significant accounting estimates. This is just a reminder that of all the numbers that are in the financial statements, some of them are estimated, not all of them are exact numbers, and this is the nature of some of those estimates. I won't go over these in a great amount of detail. The one I will point you to is the compensated absences estimate at the end of this section. This gives you more context about the GASP 101 standard and the estimates that go with it. And then if we keep going, Appendix A, significant written communications between management and our firm. This is the representation letter, just a copy for your records of the representations that were made during the audit. And then finally, if we get to the very last section, Appendix B, these are the accounting pronouncements that are coming up in the future. So this year, we have the compensated absences standard. In future years, these are the standards that are going to become applicable. And that is the end. So as we close, I just want to reiterate what Betsy has said. We have had a tremendously smooth audit process this year. We're issuing it in October. You should definitely give you and your library staff a big pat on the back and a big kudos for such a smooth audit process, especially with all the turnover and other challenges that you've had.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Any questions? All right. Have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I would suggest we give a round of applause to our staff and the auditing firm. So thank you guys. Thank you so much. I mean, working with PB Marres has been a pleasure over the last three years. You guys really came alongside us and helped, because in the beginning, we needed a lot of help, and you were willing to do that and put in the extra time and relationships. And so we're very thankful to have you as our auditing firm, and thank you for all of your hard work. I want to thank staff too, ACE, for jumping in. Thank you very much for all the work you've done, Jamie and Zach, I know you've both been involved as well, so thank you for your hard work to get us an early audit, which is amazing. Just looking back, considering where we've come from, having two very late audits, and now having two audits that are ahead of schedule, is a great achievement, and I just thank you all for your hard work to make that happen. So thank you very much. Also, I know they're not here, I know Ken helped some with this audit as well, so I want to thank him, and then also Anne Chauver, obviously, as our consultant has helped too. So we've got a good team together, and we're very thankful for that, so thank you. No questions? Nobody's thought of anything? Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is our citizens' time. And I have two people here. Where do we want to have them stand?
Can I just sit?
Yeah. Yeah, I was just thinking, I don't want to stand in the middle.
I can get all the room.
Yeah, and the podium is like over there, so that's kind of an awkward space. So yeah, you could just sit. Thank you, Miss Friends. Would you like to go first?
I can.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Patty Franz. I'm a resident of Ashland and a former supervising librarian for the Pomongi Regional Library. Although there are many topics I could bring up this morning, I've decided that given that you are starting the library's strategic plan, I wanted to speak to the board about how you all can continue to improve library services. I do understand that you are all volunteers and have many other parts of your lives. As a volunteer for my church and other volunteer-run organizations, I know there's a lot to do and not enough time. However, you've taken on this community role, and I hope you are willing to devote time to it. The communities that PRL serves need you to take this seriously. So I ask you to do three things: visit, listen, and share. First of all, there are seven of you and seven branch libraries. It would make sense to me each even one of you picked a branch library and visited it often, not just when you were there to borrow materials, but when there is storytime, programming, any time that you can get there. Each hour that the libraries are open, they serve a different group of people. For example, the people I run into at the Ashland branch on Monday mornings are often attending storytime. When I go in later in the week, in the afternoon, there is a whole different group of people. So go often, so that you experience lots of different people and events. Once you go to the library, listen. Listen to the activity, listen to the staff interactions with the customers, and then ask questions of anyone who is in the building, and listen to their responses. Ask what they like to read, what they wish the library had, what their favorite thing is at the library. Talk to your fellow citizens about their library and how it impacts them. Make sure you hear what they are saying. Go into these conversations with an open mind. And lastly, share what you learned and what you want for the library. Share what you learned with your fellow board members. Share widely. Don't just put a notice on the PRL website and figure folks will find it. Make sure that they know what's going on. Go to the board of supervisors' meetings, share your findings with your neighbors, your friends. If you consistently and continually visit, listen, and share, I am sure that our library services will be even better than they are now, and they will reflect our community, and you will know that you did well in this important work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rudy, I'll give you this.
All right, next we have Nancy Cackley.
I'd like to open my remarks with a question, because it affects what I'll say here. I have two different things to say depending on how you answer the question. The question is, is the proposal to move administrative staff into one of the branches still being considered or not? Because it's not, I don't see it on the agenda as an applying item, because I don't know what the status of it is. It was discussed in the last meeting I attended.
Do you want me to answer that question?
Yeah.
It was a consideration, since we last talked openly about it. Our partners at Hanover County have begun working on finding us a home that does not move us into a physical building. I don't have, so us using a library building, excuse me. So at this time, those are not, those are not our plans.
Okay. Turn the pages. I'm glad to hear that, and I support that decision. Okay. My name is Nancy Cackley. I've been a resident of Ashland for 24 years. I've participated in the Friends of the Ashland Library for over 20 years, and have served on the Board of the Friends for several terms. I'm currently the ex-officio bookkeeper of the Friends of the Ashland Library. I'm requesting that planning and budgeting for renovations to the Ashland Library begin as soon as possible, and I hope to see this on future agendas. As Mr. Roberts noted in September, some of the furniture in the Ashland Library is outdated. Other renovations have been needed for a very long time. The carpet is threadbare, stained, and rippled. It's becoming a tripping hazard. The linoleum in the meeting rooms is cracked. New shelving and seating has been mentioned. I could go on. I asked the trustees to tour the library with the library director and the library manager to hear and see what needs updating and repair. We seem to be considering a large outreach effort. I'm seeing it in the budget for 2027, and I encourage you to spruce up the Ashland Library before you reach out to draw in new patrons. Make sure that they are impressed when they walk in the doors and not disappointed. There are sources of money to help renovate the Ashland Library. It's probably not enough, but it would show Hanover County that we are willing to share the cost when crafting your budget request. From 2023 to the present, the Friends of the Ashland Library have contributed over $53,000 for maintenance, equipment, and furniture for the library, and even more for books and programs. Two examples are $11,000 for new flooring and painting in 2013, and nearly $10,000 for sun filtering shades in 2016. I do not speak in an official capacity for the Friends of the Library, since I'm not on the Board in a voting capacity at the current time, but their past support makes me confident that reasonable requests that meet their mission statement do not be denied. The trustees are surely aware of the reserve fund for Ashland amounting to over $358,000, the bulk of which I believe was left to the Pomongi Regional System for the benefit of Ashland by an Ashland resident and his will. I don't know the terms and conditions of this bequest. It's never been revealed, as far as I know, but I can only hope that renovations to enhance public areas of the Ashland Library would be within the scope. I hope that the trustees will consider my request and direct Mr. Roberts to begin the budgeting and planning process to renovate the Ashland branch in the near future.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So the next point on the agenda is board response to citizens' time. Anybody have anything?
I'd like to say thank you for some very kind and helpful comments.
Yes, we do appreciate your participation and your kind thoughts and your experience, and we're just very pleased that you took the time tonight to come out and speak to us. Very important.
All right, we'll move on to the next point on the agenda, which is the consideration of the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have approval of the draft minutes from the September 24th, 2025 Board of Trustees meeting. We have the acceptance of the September 2025 board financial reports. We have the acceptance of the September 2025 warrants, the acceptance of the September 2025 monthly deposit record, and the acceptance of the September 2025 fund schedule. Okay, do I have a motion to pass the consent agenda? We can have discussion later on?
So moved.
Okay, Bob, second?
Second.
Thank you, Evan. All right, any discussion before we vote?
There was a slight error that I quickly found in the minutes, draft minutes from the previous meeting. I think under Old Business, in A, in the motion, it says that the Board of Trustees meeting moved from Wednesday, October 25 to Wednesday, October 15, 2025, and then it says that the Board of Trustees meeting, at the March Board of Trustees meeting, moved from March 25, 26 to Wednesday, March 13, 2025. I think that needs to be...
26.
26.
Yes, correct. So that's page four, under item 11, Old Business, under the motion that we changed that date to March 18, 2026 at the Atlee Branch. Thank you, Bob. I had asked Zach this question previously, but maybe I'll ask it here in the meeting. In the report, under income for September, it says that Goochlin had not yet submitted their first quarter amount.
They have since done that.
Okay.
Yeah, they've submitted Q1 and Q2.
So they have submitted Q1 and Q2 more recently?
Correct.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you very much.
And that's in the last couple of weeks, right?
Yes, like last week.
Yeah, very recent.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions? All right, so I think I need a motion to...
You already have a motion, I second to approve it. I would view that as a clerical error.
So not a need to have it? Okay.
Agreed.
That's purely typewriter.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so can we go ahead and vote to accept the consent agenda then? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? Okay, consent agenda has passed. All right, move on to our next point, which is the Director's Report.
Great. I'm going to, before I introduce a guest today, I just wanted to kind of just, a small change going forward. Part of the Director's time, I will share when we are visiting a branch. I wanted the branch managers to be able to speak, to introduce themselves, for those of you that may not have met them, but also just talk for a few minutes about their library. So I'm going to introduce Shannon Hall here. I'll let her keep sitting, so she doesn't have to go out of character for everyone else today, but she'll talk a little bit, so I'm going to kind of cede my time here for a few minutes.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, thank you all for coming all the way to Montpelier. I know it's a hike for a lot of you. I'm an Atlee area, so I definitely know the hypothetical takes, but I do appreciate your time and all of your effort doing this and being here. So Zach did ask me to talk a little bit about this branch specifically, Montpelier, and for those of you who don't know, I started out at the Atlee Branch and then came here. So I came here in February, and it's been a very quick year, it seems. So I've been trying to learn this community, even though we're a part of Hanover and Goochlin, it's so different no matter where you go. As our citizens were saying, you know, different times of the day even change, you know, what our community is using the library for. So it's been a really big deal for me to try to get feedback from our community members, their wants, their needs, what they really are trying to have, especially for such a new branch too, and with me being new here. So the biggest thing was having a larger amount and variety of programs, and we heard their voices, and we made it happen. So last year, Montpelier ran a total of 133 programs. This year, we will be hitting over 300 programs in our library. So and that's in-house, so that's not even including the outreaches that we, that my team really does love to participate in doing too. So it's something that we love to take part in, and I know all of our other branches too, so it's not just Montpelier, but all of our branches on a daily basis, there's some type of program going on, whether it be for children, for teenagers, for adults. There's so much that we have to offer, and it's really important for us to get the word out. We're continuously having more people at our branch, which is a great thing. People are still learning about us and learning that we have this new beautiful building. We're building a stronger regular patronage, which is phenomenal. We're even seeing patrons starting to sync their calendars together and figure out the programs that they want to attend together, those that just met at the library. Those are big, big things that really feel, need to be recognized too. Montpelier Center, for example, right across the way where we used to be, they used to hold an annual trunk or treat, but they're not doing that this year. So it kind of had some upset with the community members, so we took it on and we added it to our programs list. So we're doing trunk or treat this year, and we're taking it by the reins, and we are ready to be hosting it here and super excited about it. And when we got as excited as we were, Parks and Rec said, you know what, we'll go ahead and add some. So they're leaving up a lot of our Monster Mash from last weekend to now be able to be a part of our trunk or treat, so we really are keeping that partnership going too. Every third Monday, we host the Morning Cup, and that's where patrons come in, they connect with others, get to have some tea, some coffee, and just talk with each other and get to know the community more. We've had some new residents join in last time, and we have some that are continuously now being the regulars too. So they're able to come in, learn more about what's going on around the community, not having to be on social media, but to be there in person and be able to just enjoy each other's company. And we've also brought a lot of technology to Montpelier too, so not just our 3D printer, which I hope you all been checking out, but we are now also going to be having a, what we're calling, and my staff have helped us with creating the name, it's called Build a Bot Library Workshop Series, and going to begin this in December during basically public school break, where ages eight and up are going to be using STEM kits to build a variety of robots. So our Lego League group is really excited about this, they've been waiting, so it's going to be happening in December, and then we're going to have a recurring series of programs, so that those, again, eight and up, so parents are welcome, their older siblings are welcome, because there's lots of screws and everything, but they're going to get to see their robots move and be able to have that creation and feel really proud to just have that STEM aspect in our area. There are so many things that the library offers, and we're working hard to get the word out. The biggest thing is, you know, especially in our area, they're not big social media people, but we're working on it. We're also working on getting it to those that are online, as well as those that are just faces in the community. So it's spreading the voices and spreading the word of all the different types of programs, because we can touch on every type of person on what their wants are if we just listen. So thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much, Shannon, that's exciting, the new things you've got going. I think also that Build a Bot, was that part of the grant that...
It is, yes.
That you applied for, so thank you so much for taking the initiative for that and making that happen out here, so that's awesome. Glad to hear about it.
Thank you, Shannon, appreciate that. And we just celebrated our one-year birthday.
One year.
It was like last week or the week before?
Week before, six months.
Yeah, yeah, so we're just over a year, that's very exciting. Thank you, Shannon. So just a quick note, you will see on New Business, monthly reports on the agenda, that is so that the board can give feedback on this new monthly report that we're doing called the Monthly Dashboard. So this replaces the formal process that we used to use, where it was very much narrative-driven, and it was kind of just words. So every branch going forward, and this is starting in September, is going to do some visuals, as well as kind of some branch highlights, as well as we're going to record branch performance indicators, which are statistics, so that way we can kind of highlight what is going on for branches. And so we're going to kind of go over this, just the basic stuff here. You'll see our Ashland branch, they have some really exciting programs that they did. One of the things that the monthly reports will now include, and you'll see this indicated for all of the branches, is they will have year-over-year statistics. So one of the things you'll see here is this month compared to this year, this month of last year. So I'm going to start tracking year-over-year and month-over-month data. I, of course, like everyone, wants to see increases, so we're seeing increases in visits, we're seeing increases throughout, so you'll see that, we're going to scroll down a little bit, because every one of the branches has exciting programs going on, staff that are out and about, doing great things in our community. You'll see a lot of those highlighted in these monthly reports, and for those listening later, the monthly reports are posted online for everyone to be able to see all the details that are in this packet. If I scroll down a little bit here, I will show you. So this is what I'm going to highlight for the Director's Report here. This is month-over-month numbers system line. So what we're looking at is the door count, so the patrons walking in the door is at 34,000, almost 35,000. Year-over-year, we saw a 9.7% increase, so we have a trend line up over year-over-year. Our circulation was down 1.3, so about 49,000 and change just over 50,000 a year ago. Program attendance is our biggest jump. We saw almost a third more, 32% more year-over-year from September to September. New library cards also is trending up with 15% more year-over-year. New library cards also is trending up with 15% more year-over-year. And our computer sessions is continuing to trend up, 7.6%. So you're seeing on most of our metrics, we're flat or trending upwards. This will be something that we're going to track over time, and so that the board will begin to be able to see year-over-year, month-over-month in longer chunks. This data does exist, but what I'm trying to do is put it together in a way that is easily absorbed and seen. One thing that we will begin tracking, I'm working with our IT folks, Wi-Fi sessions. One thing I'm really curious is how many folks are coming in, utilizing the space, taking a seat somewhere and, you know, hooking up their laptop, connecting to the Wi-Fi. We have hardware installed, in fact, where's our one? Right there, right there on the ceiling, you'll see. Those are fairly new purchases, and we purchased those because they can actually track this data for us. So this will be a metric that as we get the technology synced up, we'll begin communicating that number as well. So I just wanted the board to see that that exists.
Quick question.
Yes.
That circulation number, is that removing King William?
No, so these numbers are not including King William.
Okay.
At all.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, when I see that number, I basically call it flat. And my view is on that probably to some degree, because you can see in the board pack, the digital content number is also going up. So you're probably, that is likely, in my professional opinion, explainable by digital content, the massive increase we've seen in that category. That would be my, if you made me guess, that would be my guess.
Okay.
So the Virginia Library Association held its annual conference in Richmond this year. We were lucky enough, thanks to support of the board and the branches that were able to let their staff go to the professional development opportunity that that provided. We had 15 staff from around the system attend, as well as two Board of Board members. Some stayed for one day, some stayed for three. I myself presented a session that I had been planning for many months on business services that the library offers. So we have a ton, both the Monkey and libraries in general have a lot of resources that the business community often doesn't know that they can utilize. Things like database systems where they can go in, so the Library of Virginia provides a lot of the databases that we use, not all, but most. And there are some of them where you can go in and find where potential clients live. You can find, if you want to start a dog-walking company, for example, I can pull up neighborhoods that have dogs, because it has industry data, it has census data, it has all these different tools. It can also show you the neighborhoods where folks are rich and they can afford your service. You can do comparison analysis. So I went in to some depth on services that libraries can, and some do provide. I provided some great examples. One really wonderful example is Seattle Public Library in Washington State on the West Coast. They have an entire unit that is dedicated to serving small business folks inside of Seattle Public Services area. So anyway, so I talked about some examples, there are a few examples in Virginia as well, but I mainly highlighted a couple of the bigger ones that were really doing a wonderful job. So I did a presentation as well. Couple of the things that I've been doing over the last month, I've met with the majority of the Board of Supervisors for Hanover and Goochland. I also met with the folks from the town of Ashland as well. Just doing introductions, talking about, learning from them what their communities are like, what they felt like they needed from the library, what they're hearing, if anything. Those were great, very productive conversations. I have met with almost every staff member in PRL. As of this moment, there's only a handful, a couple of them said they don't want to meet with me, so I won't push them to, I think they're nervous. And then there's one I'm trying to get with in a position that's kind of unique. So I've met with almost everyone, those meetings have been highly constructive. I've been able to learn about the staff in a better way. There's a ton of wonderful folks that PRL has in its midst. A lot of professionals that retired and came to work for PRL, a lot of people who are looking for career changes. I can't tell you how many former educators I talked to of this group. I have some folks that are former IT folks, former marketing folks, where I'm kind of thinking about potentially using them in an expanded way to help PRL expand what we're trying to do in the administration, because we don't have specific positions for marketing. We do have one IT position, but for an organization our size, one's not necessarily enough. So anyway, so we have some wonderful professionals in our team, and I was so glad to meet with them all. I am going to be meeting with staff regularly, not in a one-on-one setting going forward, but quarterly. My goal is to meet with the branches, go in and talk to folks, as well as do virtual town halls, where basically those big highlights, some of the things we talk about in open session in the board, but also those things that just administration is working on behind the scenes that we want to bring those things out. So really, one of the big focuses and takeaways I took from it is communication. So everything that I'm doing is coming at the mind of the staff felt like they didn't really know everything that was going on, and they weren't necessarily clued in in a timely manner. So some of the changes I've already made, so starting in October, we started weekly announcements where every Monday afternoon, I basically put out the department's announcements. Sometimes it's very mundane, it's like your P card receipts are due on Friday, please remember. But it's also things like, this staff member's retiring, here's their retirement date. So we're just kind of highlighting stuff from top to bottom in the organization to try to make sure that everyone is aware. Sometimes things were very siloed before, where maybe the programmers would hear about something, but the others wouldn't. And so this is a way to kind of capture all of those things and make sure it's kind of sprinkled around for everyone to kind of hear those changes that affect PRL, and by extension, the staff. I submitted a budget to the folks at Hanover General Services. In my conversations with the branch managers, one of the things that we worked on is what are the branch needs when it comes to repairs, when it comes to deferred maintenance? What are those things that we need from our county partners that our buildings didn't have? And we even heard today from some of our citizens' time, you know, there are snags in the carpet, there are lights that are out. We've, I know the board has talked about several times the lighting at the Mechanicsville branch, because it's dim in the youth services area. So I've brought forward all of those issues, the staff, the branch managers, the frontline folks, everybody, and we compiled a document and I submitted it. Their budget process, and this was for their budget process. So that way the General Services Department of Hanover County can make sure that they're appropriately requesting the allocation for making sure that we're doing those maintenance things. The other thing I got Hanover County to agree to is, previously, they had never included us on, even though Hanover County's buildings, we have six of our libraries, which is Hanover County buildings, they never did things like clean our carpet, clean our windows, power wash the buildings. These are things that they had a schedule to do in the other county buildings, but they were not doing it for ours. So they have now agreed to put the libraries on those things. In the past, we were sometimes funding it out of our operations account if we had the money. Sometimes we were asking our friends groups to fund those kind of things. And my view is, we should not be asking our friends groups to pay for things that should be taken care of by our partners at Hanover County. And so they've agreed to do that. So going forward, those type of things will now be in and reflected in Hanover County's process. Couple more small things. As the board knows, the, I've been meeting with the Library of Virginia liaisons that help a lot, the Directors, they have resources for libraries, we use a lot of their resources. We'll talk a little bit later about the budget. And we just got our state aid, state aid allocation, so learning about those processes. So I've been meeting with folks from the Library of Virginia as well this last month. I also started the paperwork for the State Librarian Certificate, that is a part of our, is a part of our grant that we get from state aid. Couple of the small notes that are related, not necessarily directly to this, but just I wanted to make the board aware of. This has been in the news. Baker &amp; Taylor is, was, excuse me, was one of the largest clearinghouse, publishing houses for library processing of material anywhere. My entire career, they have been dominant. The last several fiscal years, I, thank you for ACE for pulling the data for me, we spend about two-thirds of our entire book budget with Baker &amp; Taylor. As of a couple of weeks ago, they're going out of business. This is going to dramatically affect the entire public library, school library world for some time. Jeff, our Collection Strategy Librarian, started working, this has been a bit of a slow roll. I think a lot of us hoped that they were going to be able to come through this. It doesn't look like that's the case now, but at one time we thought they might be able to restructure. But Jeff, our Collection Strategy Librarian, made some contacts with BroDart in the summertime. When I was at VLA, I actually talked to the BroDart folks. We had some log jams that I was able to clear up with the BroDart folks while I was there. So we are building new relationships, we have a few different vendors, we're creating relationships and partnerships now. It is, to some degree, going to slow the amount of physical books we're getting in for the next several months. We had a ton of stuff on order with Baker &amp; Taylor. When they announced that they were closing up shop, we basically had to go in and cancel it all. So the effect on patrons won't necessarily be noticed probably in the short term, but depending on how quick these other vendors are, are able to spin up their operations to accommodate libraries like ours all over the country requesting new materials from them, it may affect the number of new materials that are physically coming in our buildings for the next several months. So I just wanted to make the board aware of this change. At this time, we're working behind the scenes, and Jeff and the collections teams are doing a lot more in-house, where they were doing it through the Baker &amp; Taylor vendor, for example, physical processing. So there is definitely a lot going on behind the scenes, but most people won't notice this change. But I just wanted to make the board aware that that happened. Virginia 250 is coming up, so this is a celebration of the United States' 250th anniversary. All of the branches have some level of programming that they're going to be doing in conjunction with different outside organizations, inside programming. We're very excited, because we're going to have between January and July of 2026 a number of Virginia 250 programs celebrating the birthday of the United States. So that's very exciting. Then the last thing I'll mention, and this may not come to pass. Last week, I had an emergency meeting with the Deputy County Administrator of Hanover County, called together a bunch of outside groups, including aid organizations, food banks, schools, to basically discuss the federal effect of a shutdown on SNAP. The outside organizations are considering things like large food drives and different things to try to ameliorate the effect. Now Governor Youngkin announced a state of emergency last week and has agreed to pay the SNAP benefits for the 6,000 residents in Hanover County that are currently enrolled on SNAP. So we shouldn't see an effect in November, but if the shutdown continues, the folks from Hanover County are trying to begin with some kind of contingency plan. My offer to them was, if we want to do food, if Hanover County's going to do a food drive, I did talk to Goochland folks, and I'll cover that in a moment. But we may do some type of promotion for them, you know, we may put some materials up and say, we're going to do this, here are drop-off points. We may even become a drop-off point if they feel like that's needed. It didn't sound like that was particularly needed, because it sounds like there's a lot of, there's a lot of groups out there that are doing this kind of aid work. I also talked to the partners in Goochland, saying I would do the same thing that we would do with Hanover in Goochland as well. And they connected me with Goochland Cares as well. So whatever we end up doing, if anything, we'll definitely rope everybody in here to say how we can help. But just another way that the library is trying to be, work with our partners in Hanover and Goochland, but also be a force for good. That is all I have for the Director's Report. As I mentioned, in New Business, you can talk about the monthly reports and anything you'd like to see, anything you'd like different for future times. But that's all for me.
Thank you, Zach. That's a lot. So, and I definitely wanted to just say the Branch Monthly Dashboard that you guys have produced is amazing. I really appreciate having everything there all organized with pictures and the performance indicators there, that's really great. So thank you to everybody that was part of that process of putting that together. And also great to see the increase year-over-year in many of our branches. So that's very exciting, so thank you for your hard work on bringing that about. I also like being able to hear from each branch manager. I don't know all of them, so I really enjoyed that, thank you. All right, the next point on the agenda is any questions from the Board for Staff? Are there any outstanding questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. The next point on the agenda is Legal Counsel updates.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. I don't have much to share this evening. I did want to remind the Board that the plan is at the November meeting. I will be preparing a presentation for a discussion on the Freedom of Information Act. As you all know, there's two components to that. The first is the open meetings provisions, and then there's also the public records. For various reasons, those rules are confusing and complicated, and people, if nothing else, it's helpful to have a refresher from time to time. So I will be doing that. I did mention at, I think it was just last month's meeting, I'll continue it, if there are other topics that you all want to receive information on, it could be at a presentation, or if you just want me to look into something and send it out. I know, I don't know if any of you were on it when I did the, I sent out a memo on making motions, because for a while, there were a few meetings about four or five years ago where just making a motion got things all twisted around the axle. So if there's any issues that you want, I will say, it appears that all of your official email addresses are up and running, which is helpful for two reasons. One, it's very helpful for members of the public who want to reach you. There's now all on there, and it is a central and easy way, once you sort of get the, I don't know, I'm going to call it the, it's not quite the nomenclature, but just sort of the pattern for how things are done. Sometimes you can even guess what somebody's email address is, if you kind of know what the, you know, at the monkeylibrary.org. It's also going to be very helpful for when we respond to public records requests. So that is a step in the right direction. So if you have any questions that you want for next month, if you want me to focus on something, just shoot me an email, give me a call, I'm always happy to help. But otherwise, I don't have any report this evening.
Okay, great. Yep, and the emails are, everybody's online, right? We're all connected? So I did have one question, which was, I think we said that there was a board email address that would go to everybody. Does anybody know what that email address is?
I have to follow up with Chris.
Okay.
I asked him if there was one in existence, and if not, to make one.
Okay.
And I just have to follow up and see if that has been done yet.
Because I think that would be helpful, if we had like a board at the Monkey Library, or a board of however you want to do it.
Yeah.
If you could just follow up on that and let us know, that would be great.
I will.
Okay, great. And then there were some questions about the regional agreement. Some people were unsure what was included in that, so I think, were you able to make copies?
Yes.
Okay, so Zach has a physical copy for everybody?
We'll get digital as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have one, yeah, I went on here. Just for our, because I think at the last meeting, Mr. Walter brought up the point about that in the new regional agreement, that the counties, the jurisdictions have signed that they're responsible for any joint rent in an admin center signed that they're responsible for any joint rent in an admin center or things like that. And that is going to be visual, we're going to see that in the budget. We have moved that to the budget because of Mr. Walter reminding of us of that. So I just thought it was good for us to have an updated copy of the regional agreement so we can review that. So if we have any questions about that, we can also get back with Mr. Walter and we'll send it out digitally as well. So. All right, thank you so much. Okay, moving on to the next, we have the standing committee reports, starting with the financial committee.
I don't have anything.
Okay. All right, moving on to the personnel committee, which would be Jody McMaster, who's not able to be here this evening. She has sent out an email regarding a next meeting date for the personnel committee. So if you haven't seen that, please make sure you respond to that, and she's in the process of setting up that meeting. So, all right, we'll move on to the next, which is old business, and the first item under old business is the FY 2027 budget request.
Okay. 2027 fiscal year budget request, starting July 1st. So just a basic timeline. At this meeting, we'll take a vote and determine whether we're going to adopt the budget. Then we will immediately turn it over to our partners at Hanover County. Our, our deadline for them is Friday. The deadline, deadline for our partners in Goachlin County is the 15th of November. So once we submit to the boards of, our partner counties, then they will work with their administration to present them later to the boards. And so the April board meeting is reflecting the board of supervisors, which will then vote on adoption of our budget request to the counties. And then the adopted motion, or the adopted budget from the board of county supervisors will come back to the board of trustees. So sometime April or June, we will, we will adopt this budget again if it's approved by the board of county supervisors. So that's just kind of a basic timeline here. And this is a rehashed couple of these pages, so, so bear with me as I, I go through these briefly. PRL's budget is covering everything from books and material, continuing education, contractual obligations, rent for the administrative support center, utilities, telephones, supplies and equipment, things like insurance, our vehicles and payroll. The revenue that we bring in as an organization includes things like state aid, potentially using the reserve fund, our expenditure refunds, which are refunds back, and then other things like fines, charges for services, so for example, copies, faxes fees, lost damage item, interest income, donations, and then the largest portion is our partner locality contributions. Shared services, so all of our county partners pay for the physical buildings as well as the staff inside them in their jurisdictions, and then their shared services. So using our formula based on the 2020 census data, Hanover County pays 82% of shared services and Goachlin County pays 18%. Now what does that include? It includes library administration, including me, include the collection strategies department, so those folks who buy and process all of physical books, materials that come in, our IT staff that service all the branches, our public service coordinators, and our delivery staff, as well as essential functions and equipment like all of the public access computers and staff computers, our copies and print, printing machines that we have in the branches and in admin, our self-check machines, all of our network equipment, all of our vehicles, the hotspots that patrons use, materials and databases that we have, room reservation software, our integrated library system, which is the way everything moves in and out of the physical branches, our catalog and website, material processing, early literacy stations, miscellaneous supplies, as well as it pays for our summer reading program materials, and then our mobile printing services. So those are the things that make up the shared service budget. Ooh, hold on. So what I'm going to show you now is the, the overview of the budget. I actually had a PowerPoint sheet for this, but for some reason, it got deleted as I was playing with things before we started. So the budget overview for this fiscal year. Excuse me. So this is the total allocation for this fiscal year, 2026. These things here are reflecting the changes in the budget request that is going into '27, and I'll show you on the next page. But we're, you're going to see an operational increase of $121,000, books and material increase of $20,000, our payroll and our health insurance increase. So this is reflecting every, every Monkey Regional Library staff member getting a 3% raise, that's where that number comes in, and then all of our benefited employees, so mainly our full-timers, we have a few legacy folks that also get health insurance. So this, the $47,000 is reflecting our health insurance premium increases. The other thing that this is having, this, this is, this budget is reflecting our two new positions for Pamunki. One is an added HR position. So the cost you see here is $91,000, and I'm going to give you here in a moment, this number and the $77,000 for the outreach manager is including salary and ancillary benefits. So everything is roped into that number. Now, we'll talk about this in a few minutes. I don't want to get bogged down in this, right in this second, but I, I do have position summaries for these two roles. The last thing that we added, and this was the big change to the budget from last time, we did not have administration rent in the previous budgets. And then after Mr. Walters discussed it at the last meeting, we began, you know, confirming the research that he laid out, and so we entered that into this budget request for our partners in Hanover and Goachlin. So the total change fiscal year, over fiscal year is $424,000 increase. That's reflecting a 7% increase up. I will pass these out here, and then I'll show you a little more details about the numbers on the next slide. So this is going in a little more detail into those numbers I was just discussing. So you'll see it divided out by the locality as well as our reflection of state aid other, which I discussed a little bit ago, a refund, and then the reserve fund. So I'll go into this here in a moment. The fiscal '26 versus the fiscal '27, so that is, that's the bifurcation down, and you see the adjustments up in the numbers from year-over-year. Then you'll see the total change in requests. So we'll go over these here now, I just kind of wanted to highlight those few things. So when we're looking at increasing, our books and material will go up $20,000, our continuing education, which funds things, for example, our staff's participation in training opportunities, professional development opportunities, that's going to go up $3,000. Our contractual services, so this is a big increase of $50,000. Now, a couple of the things that are going to be included in that, and I've discussed this briefly with the board and the staff are working on implementing this currently, adopting an Office 365 suite of products, which is a productivity tool for all of our staffs. This would be, we would be buying a license for every single PRL staff member. Right now, for example, I have a personal Gmail account, a lot of the other staff do as well, that we then use for board, you saw my board PowerPoint that I used a moment ago, that was in a, a personal Gmail account. So this would allow us to have the productivity tools that are normal and modern. So that increase there is also including other services that we're potentially looking at. So the equipment is going from $103,000 from $134,000, so up $31,000. This is reflecting the need for some updated equipment in our branches. A lot of our branches have very old public access computers, staff computers, as well as our self-check machines, which are all eight years old and they're at the end of their usable life. So we are going to begin piloting a new program coming up in the coming months. So that increase of $31,000 will allow us to begin executing on some of those things. You see our insurance went up slightly, $2,000. The majority, as you can see here, of the requested increase is coming from the salaries and benefits line, $282,000 of our additional requests is coming from that. The other big, the other big jump you see here is in our telephone line, the $26,900. So that's a significant increase year-over-year. That is reflecting in the previous fiscal '26's budget, we did not have budgeted for the brand-new Montpelier branch that would open mid-fiscal year. So that number is basically reflecting the addition of this building. Then you'll also see an adjustment up for utilities. So as I mentioned, all of these equate to 7.96% year-over-year increase to our partners in Hanover and Goachlin. The branch, I'm going to spend just a moment here talking, showing you the branch contributions because this is coming from our partners in the respective counties. Excuse me. Hanover County and then Goachlin County. Now you'll, and I'm going to talk more about the shared expenses in a moment because I, we, we broke that out a little differently this time, just to kind of give a better visual for folks, but you kind of see the breakdown in the requests for the, for the localities. So looking at the shared, one thing that, and she's not here tonight, but...
It's probably the shared locality, the tab next to it.
Yep, thank you. Next one, yep. Can you, Shannon, can you see that because you're kind of the farthest?
I can't see.
Okay. So I had Ace adjust the way we did this, so from the last time you saw when we presented the budget, we changed it slightly. The numbers here in, in the highlighted bold is showing the county's share of that specific line item. So for example, we're asking for $683,000 for physical books and materials. Goachlin's share and Hanover's share is the bold. So that's reflecting, as I mentioned earlier, that breakdown of the 82% for Hanover County, the 18% for Goachlin County, and that goes all the way down. So this is just a visual so that folks can talk to their, their board of supervisors if, if they wanted to.
This is very, very helpful.
Yeah.
It's very helpful.
Yeah, I know, I know when Barb was asking for it, I was literally like doing 18% of the number on my phone to kind of like answer the questions, and, and so that's, that's why we came to this, so that way you can, you can, you know, report back a little, a little, a little easier with a, with a document like this. So that's kind of why that's laid out the way that is. So going back, excuse me. So these are the changes in our request for '27. We have decreased out the number for the reserve fund because we're no longer asking for the amount for rent, as well as the board was generous enough in this fiscal year to bring out money for book purchases. So that is why you see that decrease reflected there, because it's no longer reflecting the rent in next fiscal year, and it's no longer reflecting that additional amount. We also got our state award approved today, so it's reflecting the $25,000 increase in our state aid year-over-year. So these will be, oh, so that's kind of just showing you the breakdowns. So the, excuse me. So the total change in request year-over-year is at $424,105. Any questions? You need me to go back to something?
I was just going to say, the reason those numbers don't match...
Is because it's not reflecting the reserve fund.
Right. It's not reflecting the rent because you, above, right?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah, because we took, it's, yeah, if you, if you went, if you went and added that all up, it wouldn't make sense because we took the rent out of the reserve fund in previous years.
Right.
And so the fact that we're not doing that this year, it kind of creates that little distortion.
Do you think it would be helpful to add an asterisk beside some of these items such as that one with a little footnote at the bottom, so when you look at it a glance, you immediately get your question answered?
It's funny because Ace and I talked about that, yeah. We, we did, we did consider that, yeah. Ace is, Ace is the money man.
Yeah. Well, I think you need to follow his advice.
There you go.
Consider it done, Ace. Yeah, that will clear things up because it will be asked, and it's easy to see it graphically if you put it out there.
Yeah.
Just put a little asterisk into one of those little columns, those little short columns, like B and D.
Yeah.
And, you know, reference it in the bottom with a statement, so they can easily see why there's a change from this year to, and last year.
Yep. And I, I think even from this front page, like the operational increase, obviously hearing you explain why is really good, and maybe putting some of those major pieces as, as why would be good when we submit it to our, our partners. You know, that the fact that Montpelier's, you know, almost $30,000 bill for this location, and I believe it's not just the library, right? It's for the whole building? The library's footing the bill for the whole building?
Correct.
So like adding that in so they understand why, 121,000 operational increase, you know, where some of the bigger pieces come from, might be helpful on an overview page too, I think.
Yeah, part of my, part of my plan is when we submit this to our partners in the county, is I'm going to say, you know, I'd love to come, you know, talk to you about this. So that way, if they do have any live questions, and I know in the past, Ace and Jamie and I have discussed, you know, they'll ask them, but this is just kind of a lay it out exactly what I'm doing for you guys.
Yeah.
So that's going to be...
In fact, you might even, you know, add a footnote or a side note and use a red arrow pointing to the individual item. So while it will answer many of the questions, you're still there to go into more detail about why you've now included this in a generally accounting and acceptable accounting practices as it should have been previously.
Yes.
And it is now.
Yeah. Well, and I think too, I think the explanation as well as, you know, why was this never, or why is this being added? Well, it's because we just adopted a new regional agreement in the last, you know, several months, and so as part of that regional agreement, so it allows us to kind of better explain something instead of they just see something brand-new that they've never seen before. And especially since the budget folks are not necessarily the ones that would be aware of what is in our regional agreement that the board of supervisors agreed to.
Yeah, so we would suggest that anything that's extraordinary, such as those items and any other ones that, you know, that we, and for instance, you mentioned the number for, for payroll.
Yes.
Also includes benefits.
It does.
So if you immediately look at that and go, wow, you know, that's, that's a very well-paid individual, well, it also includes, you know, 25% of those benefits or more.
Yeah.
So I know in that timeline you gave us at the beginning, you said that Hanover County takes this from like November to March, and then their board of supervisors votes on it in April.
Correct.
But there is going to be back and forth between, between now and then as far as, you know, them saying, okay, this looks realistic or it doesn't look realistic. So we're going to hear that kind of feedback prior to then, right?
How much was that in the past, Jamie? How much like back and forth were we getting from the county partners? Was it a lot or was it...
It varies from, from year to year.
Okay.
There was the compensation scale increase, there's a lot more discussion back and forth. So there will be that, the process through till when April. So if there's a, you know, if there's a concern about whether they want to consider something different, they will come back to the library. something different, they will come back to the library or through this act.
Okay.
And if I may, no, the schedule hasn't been announced, but traditionally in Hanover, the county administrator presents the budget to the Board of Supervisors in February. Then it's the period between February to April when it's adopted. So between now and usually January is when those discussions are, Mr. Roberts pointed out, that there's a placeholder of 3% if the county determines a different percentage, whether that be higher or lower. Normal, my understanding is normally the library kind of matches that. And we do have Goochlin and Hanover, so depending upon where they are, it can sometimes be a board decision as to how to finalize that. But if that number were lower, then some of these costs would be lower. If that number were higher, that would be on a budget line higher, but then similarly both Hanover and Goochlin, their contributions would increase as well.
Okay. All right. And in talking to the Board, one of the things that was suggested to me by a Board member was if the Board is going to fund a new position, that we should sort of have it as part of our policy, that if we're funding new positions, we should have like a general, at least a rough outline of that job description. And that's kind of where these two documents came from because I did ask Zach. I think that's a great practice to actually have a job description that goes with an additional budget request for a new employee. And so that's why we have these. In the past, we've approved new positions without actually having a job description and some of those roles are still not filled. So I think it's kind of good practice for us moving forward to have some kind of job description as we move forward.
Very good.
So what I would like the Board to consider approving the presented budget from PRL's staff.
Okay, do you have a motion? So moved. All right, Barb, do you have a second?
Second.
Second. Any conversation?
I'd like to raise some conversation.
Yeah.
Okay, so this budget includes two people in the budget?
Yes.
And the likelihood of Hanover County in particular approving that kind of an increase to a budget request is suspect, to say the least. So how do you handle, or is it even worthy of discussion right now? How do you want to handle the reaction to that? Or should we do, we need to talk about that now? And also, in this position description for the Outreach Manager, it includes the bookmobile? Evaluates and updates bookmobile stops annually? Have we chosen to really get the bookmobile in this budget?
We have not.
No, that's been kind of pushed back.
Yeah, but it's complicated, though.
Because it's in there.
Yeah, it's in there. It's an assumption.
Well, that's an interesting point because maybe we can make...
I can adjust it to just reflect the Outreach Services Department.
Yeah.
I could remove anything. The reason I added the bookmobile service is because I think over time, the idea of adding the bookmobile is generally agreed to. Now, what that timeline is, it may be much, much longer than I would like, but I mean, I think, but I will reduce, not reduce, eliminate the verbiage to just reflect the Outreach Services Department. And then if there's a bookmobile added in subsequent years, then we can obviously readjust this. This is not, this is what was in my head, looking around at our peers, what those positions in there. So there is, there's nothing set in concrete about these documents here.
Yeah. Okay. So, yeah, and I think just to clarify, as far as kind of timing, I think it was a general consensus kind of among the Board that we wanted to take some more time to hear from our community partners, from staff and things like that, and have a decision regarding purchasing of a bookmobile done within the process of a strategic plan. And so later in the meeting, we're going to hear a little bit about the strategic plan timeline. It's one of the items under New Business. And so we want to incorporate any decision we would make about a big purchase into our strategic plan. And so we want to make sure that we have done that well and that we have a strategic plan that takes us into the future. And if a bookmobile is part of that, then we will deal with those decisions once we get there. But I think we all agree that an Outreach Manager, and Zach even in his presentation told us, you know, that you can have outreach without having a bookmobile. And there were a lot of other very good things that he talked about that we could do without having the actual physical vehicle. So that's kind of what we're trying to move forward, is the idea of having someone who's looking at outreach and how we can improve some of our numbers and actually reach the communities that the library is working in. So, yeah, like Barb suggested, maybe just saying, you know, if we, you know, get a bookmobile, that that would be part of, obviously, that person's responsibility as well. But we want to incorporate that into the strategic plan.
Yeah.
And as far as how we, I mean, I'm, you know, nervous about going to Hanover County and asking for an increase of $488,000 to our yearly budget. I mean, but at the same time, I feel like all we can do is ask and wait for a response. And so I feel like we should go ahead and ask, and then we'll, when they get back to us, we can pivot based on their response to us. Well, I also think that we have a strong, $108,000 of that $400,000 increase is due to a document they all signed.
Yeah.
That we all agree makes sense, so, which is the way it should have been done, probably, always.
And that's why I said originally, I think it's very important, particularly for that item, you know, to star it, identify it, move that off the table. You know, you're moving the money, you're not creating a new expense.
Sure.
And you want to make that clear right up front.
Yeah.
That this is something that, you know, we're improving our processes and our internal controls here by moving it where it needed to be. It's not an additional $800 and $8,000 expense.
Yeah.
Particularly, you know, in the same hand, we're asking for two new positions.
Yes.
And, you know, there's going to be discussion. So this is something you can take off the table right away. And they'll approve the fact that, you know, that you've identified that and now put it in its proper, proper place.
Yeah.
Also, when they see the numbers that we're trying to increase, I think they will realize the value of an outreach person to really get into every branch and to get out into the public and get more people in the buildings. I mean, was it 23%?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, when they see that, they're going to realize, well, we do put resources into these libraries and we want them to be used and we want them to be in good, clean shape and not tripping on the carpet.
Yeah.
So I think that that makes a good case for an Outreach Services Manager. Because I believe that is the beginning of more growth.
Yeah.
So... All right, so we have a motion to approve the FY 2027 budget as presented to us by staff, and we have a second. Is there any more discussion? All right, then I'll go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that has passed.
Thank you.
All right, the next point under Old Business is an update regarding the Hanover Branch.
Okay. I had a conversation with the General Services Director a couple of weeks ago, and the Hanover Branch, they did some, they did some testing down in the basement. It has long suffered from water damage. So what they're going to do is they're going to go in, there's a bunch of furniture down there that's obsolete furniture. It was basically used as a storage facility for some length of time. They're going to remove everything, they're going to remediate the space so that there's no mold, mildew, anything else that would have collected down there from the excessive water damage over time. And then they're going to begin working with contractors. Once everything's been remediated, then they're going to begin working with contractors to make sure it doesn't continue over the future. One of the things about that extensive of work is it may take some time to do. And so what I'm having conversations with the Hanover staff, and on this coming Friday, I'm going to talk to some vendors that Hanover County put us in touch with. Basically, what we could potentially do to improve the space while it's being worked on. So can we look at potentially new furniture? Like we heard earlier about the Ashland Branch, the Hanover Branch is also suffering from some of the same type of things. So while it's down for the maintenance that's going to be done, can we do some refresh of the space? So I'm going to talk to a vendor coming up on Friday. They're going to look at the potential of new furniture, potentially changing the layout of the space where maybe we have, right now, one of my big things there is the youth services area is as small, it's very tiny. For those of you, the interesting thing about the room is it has a fascinating history. The entire building does. So part of my, part of my research now is trying to find potential grant opportunities that we can do, potential partnerships. We have a really interesting genealogy resources there. How can we better utilize that? So part of my conversation with those folks is maybe we turn part of the old admin space that's upstairs, and it wasn't really good for admin, which is why they left, but could it potentially be a local history place where we have all these massive history books taking up the bottom of the facility? So can we move them upstairs, provide some additional space upstairs so that patrons could potentially use? The point of this is to basically explore options. There's nothing decided. I want these professionals to come in who this is their, this is their job, and to potentially look at what we could potentially do with the space. So I have that meeting on Friday. So that's kind of the update for the Hanover Branch, which isn't a lot, unfortunately, but there are some things moving along. The timeline on any work being done is pretty far down the road because the space has to be cleaned up and then remediated and fixed before anything else will happen. So it'll be, it'll be some length of time, but I'll continue to update the Board as things change on that, so.
Zach?
Yes?
I like that idea about the genealogy space. When I was working in Dallas, one of the things that I liked to do in the evenings after work is go over to the Dallas Public Library. And I found out that the top floor of the library was all genealogy and family history.
Yes.
And I was fortunate in that the curator had a particular liking for Virginia history, so I was able to explore a lot of my own.
Yeah.
But what I'd like to, what I'd like to see, maybe the next step, is look how much space it takes up, how it would be presented. It would be nice to have a table to be able to lay out your books and so forth.
Yeah.
Access to a copier, whether up there or downstairs, even a small one.
Yeah.
Because a lot of it is, oh, I found this, I want to copy it, take it home and build it into my family tree software type thing. And I've already done some research in that library in my own family history, which isn't even Hanover, but a lot of it is from Virginia.
Yes.
The early settlers and founders of this country, right here in Virginia.
Absolutely.
So I think that's a great idea.
Yeah. And the other, the other potential it gives us, and when we, when I was brainstorming with the branch manager and some of her team about this, I said, this is a potential partnership opportunity with the Historical Society or the DAR or whoever. Like because if we have these resources, and some of them are irreplaceable, some of the, some of the books on their shelves that are there, you can't find them anywhere else. So the resources are only there.
Right.
And so it really kind of is a unique opportunity for us to potentially highlight that additional service. We do, we do have that as a space now. Part of the challenge, too, interestingly, and this would, this would kind of help us with that, is right now, it takes up a lot of the space for an underutilized, so it would, moving that upstairs would allow us to protect it better because sometimes those things do walk away, unfortunately. But it also allows us to kind of have that really centralized space turned into something maybe different. So whether we would highlight a different portion of the collection, maybe we could move the, you know, the kids' books out there instead of the small, little reading room that they're in right now. It just would give us some options if we were to kind of change that location. And then we could add in things like we have a microfiche machine that we have sitting in storage right now. We don't have room to put it there, but if we, but if we change the location of where our genealogy resources were to, for example, upstairs, then we could have that service, too. So the folks, when they're coming in to do their genealogy research using our materials, then we could also have that available. It's a, it's a thing that we already have, we just don't have the ability to actually offer it. So it gives us more options, basically.
You know, the other, I was thinking when you were, when you were talking about that because, as you know, I've done a lot of, not myself, but as you know, the Library of Virginia...
Yes.
Is a huge depository for Virginia family history and has microfilms of all of the original, a lot of the original wills and land grants and so forth. So it might not be a bad idea if you could position one of those workstations upstairs with the information about how to, you know, right over here on the side of it, how to reach out to the Library of Virginia, and you can sit up there and you can do that research.
Yes.
You know, which is so important. And then, you know, print screen, you know, to the printer, you know, and copies of it, etc. That's great.
Yeah, absolutely.
A little like that.
Okay. Great. All right, well, anybody have anything else? We're going to move on to point 13 on our agenda, which is New Business. The first thing is the monthly report.
Was there anything that the Board felt like that they would want to see that was not included in the monthly report that I provided today?
So I think the only thing that was kind of missing for me was a bit more of an admin-staff report. I know in the past, we've had like a finance section or a collection section. I don't know, is that something?
I can do that, yeah.
I mean, you kind of did it in your verbal report.
That's what I was just going to say, I kind of went over it.
Yeah.
So I can, I can come up with a, the problem is...
It's an ad- glance kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah. We don't have the great visuals that the branches have.
Yeah, sure.
So ours would be pretty just, you know, just a script, basically.
Bullet points, essentially.
Exactly, exactly. So I'll do that in the future.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Anything else? All right, we'll move on to the next point, which is Library Card Registration and the Draft Proposal.
Okay. So the Library Card Draft Proposal, this was brought about because we have the embargo on King and Queen County coming up at the end of the year. So their two-year embargo is coming up at the end of December.
18 months.
Excuse me. So their embargo's coming up. And so this, this kind of started as, oh, sorry, I have the wrong thing. We'll talk about that in a minute. So this will kind of help us going forward. So this document here is basically helping better define, and I'll talk about some of the changes from our existing policy. This will better define who is eligible for a library card. This is a, this is a shift for the folks that live outside of Hanover and Goochlin County. This is not any change at all for residents of PRL. So a couple of these things are very similar to what we currently have, and I'm going to, I'm going to scroll it down just a touch so that folks can see this a little better. It goes into a library card being required for access to our materials, but not our physical spaces or programs. The definition of who can get a library card. Residents, property owners, or employees within the Pamunkey Regional Library Service Areas of Hanover and Goochlin County. Residents of jurisdictions with reciprocal borrowing agreements. And I have listed there all of our neighboring counties that offer our residents of Hanover and Goochlin access to their library collections. There are, and I'll go into those in a few minutes here, there are some notable counties that are not on this list, and I'll go into those in a few moments. This also includes of those eligible categories, students attending... This also includes of those eligible categories, students attending school or college located within our service area. So this is not just including the Randolph-Macon folks, but also people attending a private school, any school institution would qualify for this. The Board of Trustees, and this is verbiage basically taken from the existing policy. The number E, and I'm going to come back to D in a second, or excuse me, D is, the Board of Trustees may determine that for any jurisdiction, regardless of their eligibility for a library card set forth above, may be ineligible for a library card for a period of time. So that's the exact same verbiage as our current policy. And then E, the Board of Trustees may determine that for any jurisdiction, regardless of their eligibility for a library card set forth above, may be eligible for a library card. So this could potentially be an outside entity that is outside of the geography of the Hanover and Goochlin Counties that the board sees fit to add service to. Any questions on the eligibility portion?
Zach, I have a question.
Yes?
And you may know, I'm sure the board knows what the history is. What is our history with New Kent? You said some counties obviously are not included here.
Yeah.
That's an obvious question.
So the Heritage Public Library, let me pull up my
And then my other question is, if not, why?
Okay. Why they do not allow access for our patrons to access their collections, I don't know.
May I start a discussion we can have?
So I've asked the director of the Heritage Public Library, as well as another one, which we'll talk about here in a moment, Louisa County. There are a few counties that are left off of my reciprocal borrowing agreement for eligibility. King and Queen, which is coming up on its embargo soon. King William, their system does not allow access. They're still on embargo, so the board would have to decide whether they want to lift that embargo early with this adoption or not. Louisa, let me go to the next slide because this is a little bit better on showing some of the affected populations. So you see King and Queen and King William are our two most affected counties by this potential change. This is how many users we had before the embargo's hit. Louisa, Montpelier branch is most affected by that. You can, you know, if you're really strong, you can throw a rock and hit Louisa. There, I talked to their library director about Jefferson-Madison Regional Library system. They will not change their reciprocal borrowing agreement to include us. The director, God love him, he said he wanted to, but they would have to have all five Board of Supervisors for everyone in their regional consortium to agree, and he says he's asked, it's never going to happen. So Louisa would be the biggest, excluding these because these are currently under embargo. Louisa would be the most affected, this branch would be the most affected by this change in policy. My view is, any of this change would not affect people who are currently holding a card. It would stay active, we would not end it. But future years from now, so your card can be valid for three years, when that renewal comes up, and we'll talk about this in a few minutes, they would have to buy access to our collection. New Kent is affected as well. Other in Virginia, which basically means any county outside of those in the reciprocal area is other, and then out-of-state folks, 28, so fairly small. So really, the biggest impact is going to be to those folks that live in Louisa County, but consider this their home library because of geography. And it's about a 30-minute drive, give or take, to the closest Louisa County library. So this would definitely affect in a significant way those Louisa folks. New Kent as well, but Louisa, as you see, is definitely the biggest affected there. Like I said, we could adopt this policy so that it would change nothing over time, or it would only change over time, excuse me.
Can you send us that? Will you be able to send us this?
All this will be posted on the website.
Okay. And just to take a note, I think the policy proposal in the board packet is not matching with
Yeah, it's missing the E.
Under requirements, at least.
Okay. So the next thing I'll highlight, because the rest of these are basically the same thing, they're basically the same thing as we have now. So the implementation, so through the reciprocal borrowing agreements, residents of the above-listed counties are eligible to receive a Pamunkey Regional Library card at no cost and have full borrowing privileges subject to PRL circulation policy. So basically, this is saying that those counties that were listed, that give Hanover and Goochlin County folks access to their library systems, we will give them the equal access that Hanover and Goochlin's residents get. This is the big change. It's not a big change, but the way we're going to implement it is the big change. Because right now, we have a card that theoretically people would buy access for, but because of the way we had a pretty big loophole, nobody ever paid. Individuals who do not reside, own property, or work within the PRL service area or the listed reciprocal jurisdictions may obtain a Pamunkey Regional Library card by paying an annual non-resident fee of $40. This fee provides access to PRL borrowing privileges and services to the PRL collection for one year from the date of payment. This here, right now, the Hanover and Goochlin per person cost, all in, is somewhere in the mid-$30 range. So this is basically allowing someone to, and that is 2023 numbers, so it's a little stale. So just as we've all seen over the last several years, it's probably a pretty good representation, if not exact, to what the actual cost for our governments is. I actually originally had a bit of something that I wanted, that the library leadership team had some good points. I was going to, part of this reason here for a non-resident fee, a lot of the folks that are out of area are using us for the digital content that they will download. And it's a big, it's a big, ever-growing expense. Several months ago, as the board knows, we lowered the limit on how much digital content patrons can have. So this is a way for us to help prevent us from having to make that hard decision again. Because if we cut off all of those folks that you saw that were out of the area, that were not Hanover or Goochlin residents, from basically running up our bills, then we don't have to make those hard decisions on lowering access for our patrons and our community members. So this will help us, basically, this is basically a real representation of cost. This isn't us making a bunch of money on them. But it's a real representation of what the cost is based on what the counties give us. So this is a pretty big change. Because before, the loophole was, we had similar verbiage to all of this, but the secondary requirement was, or if you had a library card in good standing, which we had no way to verify, but if you had a library card in good standing at any Virginia public library, you qualified. So that meant that anybody from anywhere in the state of Virginia could walk in with a library card and get access to everything we have. So I did some research because I knew the board would ask. There are only, there are 201 public libraries in the state of Virginia. There are only five that do it the way we do. We are the minority. What I'm presenting here, this change, is taken from everywhere else. This is what, this is a standard policy. This is not us doing anything different than anyone else. The only thing you'll see is if you go do a little research, and I actually was emailing back and forth, the public library directors in the state of Virginia have a listserv that is run through the Library of Virginia. So I basically asked. I said, when was the last time anybody looked at revitalizing their fee? Because $25 is a very common fee. Most of them hadn't touched it in years. So this $40, you'll see, it might be a little higher than some of our jurisdictions around us for the non-resident borrower that would buy in a card. And it's just because they haven't reflected the real costs over time. 10, 15, 20 years ago, we didn't have several dollars per item that I would check out on my phone. We do have that expense now. So this $40 is just reflecting the real cost of someone buying in membership effectively. My proposal would be this would go into effect January 1. Those folks that are not, we would not expire anyone's card immediately. So those jurisdictions, so if somebody is in Arlington, Virginia, and they got a card from us when they were traveling down here, we would not immediately deactivate their card. But they would not be eligible upon renewal to renew it without paying the out-of-area card fee. Any questions or thoughts on that?
So again, I see you have additional points there, youth cards and authorized users, which aren't in our. But I would just say, we spent a lot of time trying to have like a template for how we wanted to do, yeah, how we wanted to do. So, yeah. Did you want to say something?
Go ahead.
We did, I think we've got a version here that puts it more into the
Okay, is that what this is? Okay.
I may have an old version up here.
Okay, okay.
The meat of it is all the same, it's just the format is a little
And I'm not asking for approval tonight.
Right.
This does not need to be done tonight. In fact, I think, you know, looking at it and reviewing it, and then we can bring it up next meeting for sure with the, because you guys said you were missing, was it E? You were missing one of the bullets?
Yeah, yeah. It's just different.
Can you send that one out?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be really helpful if we had that one.
Yeah, will do.
So, and I think generally, when it comes to policy changes, we do take one meeting. So we review it in the one meeting, and we don't actually vote to approve a policy change to the next meeting. Yes, I would like to digest.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Zach, you also, you mentioned Louisa.
Yes.
So what's the latest with New Kent? Or did you mention that?
Well, I showed you the numbers on New Kent. I don't have any
I mean, have you had any contact with the people in New Kent?
They're not going to, they're not going to give us reciprocal borrowing agreements either.
Okay. I guess I answered your question.
Yeah.
All right. Let's move on to the next part, which is strategic plan timeline.
Okay. So as the board knows, the strategic plan, and this is a loose term because this is not a true strategic plan. This was a stopgap measure to make sure that we had some guidelines that we had. So what I'm asking for in this is basically, and I have some of the same verbiage that the board used in the previous plan, is what I would like is basically a continuation of this plan through the fiscal year. Then, and this is kind of where the timeline goes. So basically, the current strategic plan that's on the website, nothing changes. I tweaked a few of the words at the very top to reflect what we're doing and the new theoretical timeline. So what we would do, if the board agreed to approve the interim plan, the stopgap plan, that would get us through the fiscal '26. So then what we would do, and when I say we, I mean library, we would begin doing community engagement. So we would go through the community and begin to solicit feedback. This would be the first step. What do they want to see from their public library? What is it that, and we've heard things about like inviting spaces. So how can we think about changing the current space that we have? So we heard a citizen talk about, you know, improvements. All of that would be incorporated into community engagement. Where do they see their wish lists? And that is where the staff bring in all the information that the public is giving us. So what we would do is between November and February, we would do community town halls across all of branches. We would go to every single branch at least once, as well as have two virtual town halls. So that would just be a Zoom town hall. What I'm going to try to do with some of these bigger branches is have multiple, sometimes, you know, maybe on a weekend day or an evening day to kind of get different audiences at different times, to kind of make sure that we're getting a good assortment of public feedback. Then the next thing is as we go into that next stage, then we're going to be doing the same type of things for staff. At the end of the day, staff are obviously an integral part of what PRL is. So we would begin doing, the February through March, we would begin doing the same type of town halls at the branches, talking to the staff. What do they feel like they need from the strategic plan? What updates, changes, missions? All of that would be kind of incorporated into the conversation as well. Then, as we roll into the spring, so starting looking at April and May, that is where we start working with the Board of Trustees, the library leadership team, myself, the director's office. We would all begin taking the information and putting it together, making sure that we're kind of refining those themes that we heard over and over again, making sure that we're reflecting those in our final product. The goal would be, since to have a final product adopted by, excuse me, the end of the fiscal year in June. So that is the current goal. Nine months, fairly ambitious timeline for a strategic plan of this size, but I think we can do it. This strategic plan would get us through the next five fiscal years. So that would be, that would be the goal. A strategic plan on file is a requirement for our state aid grant that we have. So that is why adopting this stopgap measure is important, because at the end of October, this document is technically no longer our strategic plan. So that's why, that's why changing the date effectively on our current strategic plan to expand it, or to extend it to the end of the fiscal year, which gives us enough time to kind of do the due diligence, the community engagement, the staff engagement, and then the work to put together a strategic plan. Are there any questions?
So just to clarify, at the end, I see June 2025, present final strategic plan.
The date's off.
Well, is it FY '26 to FY '30? Is that kind of?
Yeah. That's roughly the plan, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So it really should be
It should be April '26 to '27.
Twenty-seven to twenty-seven to '31.
Exactly. It should be '27 to '31.
Okay. There's a, not where the dates are off, but just
I know, there's a date, they're too
We gather, we gather.
Yeah. Yeah, this is not an official document. This is a, this is a just timeline so you can see a visual.
Absolutely. So where do we foresee seeing other stakeholders involved in the process? For example, our partners from the jurisdictions and counties, friends of the library, things like that? Where do we see those?
Probably in here after we've engaged with the public. Now, part of the public engagement is going to be those community partners. So that, and of course, our community groups, like our friends groups, they're part of that. So those are citizens, which is why, you know, they're kind of lumped in there. But we definitely are going to have all of our friends groups, and this is going to be, you know, a conversation where Jamie and I are going to the board meetings and talking to them, and this is going to be our topic. And, you know, those outside organizations that we partner with. So that, and it's off the screen now, of course, but that three-month period is where the outside groups will be. And then our partners inside the counties or inside the town of Ashland, for example, will be more in the, once we have solicited feedback from the citizens and the staff, they'll be kind of in this zone here, because then we'll have something to present, and then, of course, we're going to hear their feedback as well. But it's more of gather, 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 and then we'll bring something forward in the fourth and fifth bullets there.
Okay. Thank you.
So you should have one in your board pack. So what basically I'm asking for is approval of the current strategic plan that Pamunkey has with the basic adjustments of the timeline, basically kicking it down through the end of this fiscal year.
Okay. Do I have motion?
So moved.
Bob, do I have a second? Second? All right. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, then I will call for the question. All right, seeing none, then I will call for the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. There we go.
And that's all I got?
All right. There's one more point update. Was there anything you wanted to?
I mentioned it in the director's time.
Okay, all right, great.
We're good.
So we can cross that one off.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any other business we need to address? All right. Then I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.